Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Just going to just inform you, Dave Adson from Public Works is here, so if anybody has any questions for him when we get to this section of the agenda, we can feel free to ask him. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Being an approval or amendments of meeting agenda. Be it resolved that council approved the agenda of committee to hold meeting dated February the first 2022 as presented. A mover and a seconder, please. Matthew and Bill, any discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Approval of the minutes. Be resolved that council approved the following minutes as presented. Regular meeting of council January the 18th, 2022. Special meeting of council January the 25th, 2022. A mover and a seconder. Pat and Angela, is there any discussion on those minutes? Go ahead, bud.
Thank you. Whoops. Hey, my life. Good. Item 10. On the regular council meeting in Cobalt, January 18. That was the NOHFC elevator resolution. I note that it says it was deferred at the bottom. And I would ask your worship for an explanation, as I recall. No counselor moved a motion and there was no seconder, and you declared it dead.
Yes, I believe it is dead. That is no mistake.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Can we get that corrected, please?
It's my, yes, I will. It's my understanding that the grant is no longer in motion.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, all in favor? Pat and Angela? Thank you. Is there any business arising from the minutes? We just discussed that. Inquiries from members of the general public. Delegations and presentations, we have none, but at the next committee hall meeting, the library board will be available for their budget presentation. Item eight. No business arising from the delegations and presentation. Staff committee reports. I'm going to take this time now to introduce our new intern, Evan Franks, sitting over here. Evan's been with us now for what, a month and a half or so?
Closer to double that, almost three months.
Doing a bang up job for us. He will be actually talking to the bylaw down here if we need any, have any questions. Okay. Items for council direction, 10.1, water and wastewater operation contract considerations. The deadline for submission for submissions has come and passed. Therefore, we will have a motion at next general meeting. Suggesting that we go with material clear water association to handle our water project. Our project, our water is water and wastewater. 10.2. A bylaw to authorize the borrowing of money to meet current expenditures.
Are we not going to get a chance to comment on 10.1?
Yeah, I guess you can comment. Sorry about that. I go ahead.
Thank you. I've been doing a bit of research on my own, talking to people I know who are in the business. And getting a bunch of background information, including chats with Mr. Adset. And first of all. Let me again repeat that that deadline was, in my mind, very unfair and absolutely impossible for anybody to meet. And again, it goes back to there having been no request for proposals issued. So they were shooting in the dark trying to come up with something for us, but they didn't know what because we hadn't told them. And apparently, we did not bother to try and tell them, which I think is a little bit unfortunate. I, David may get a chance to talk about some of the things, and if not, I will fill in some gaps there. But I also wanted to note, there are other had we done a request proposal, which generally you do in procurement, because you want to throw the widest net you can. But I'll throw out one name, Northern Waterworks, another company in the area, and I understand there's another company that's looking to enter into our area. And of course, our own town employees. So there's three people that we didn't hear about, that we could have heard about. For David's proposal, I've listened to parts of it. He was kind enough to call me today before this meeting. And I've listened to it, and I think there is significant value in what they are trying to put together. And I would absolutely urge council to slow down this speeding train to approval and take a much longer look at it. You know, we, I think we put Roger LaPointe in charge of our water plant back in about 2002, about 20 years ago, and our guys have been working at the plant without incident for that long, which means they really know their job. They're really good at it. And with all due respect to OROs we've had in between, like from Aqua, they're very rarely at the plant. They've been doing it pretty much on their own. Giving, I asked them, what's your response time if there's an alarm at the plant? For us, it's about five minutes, because three of our guys live that close to it. I understand for Aqua, it's an hour. They ask for an hour. An hour can be a very long time responding to an alarm at a water plant. A lot of bad things can happen. What are I guys do for us being that close? Well, remember a couple of years ago, generator blew out in a storm out at the plant. Our staff went out, got their own generator and plugged it back in, so everybody would have water the next day. Above and beyond the call of duty, and they've met it every time. So I see no sense in just totally saying, let's walk away from that asset that we have to buy this asset that Aqua is telling us they have, that may or may not be better or worse. And I think personally, not knowing where their workers are going to come from, how experienced they are, when we have a golden team right there, I think it's a mistake. Looking to the wetland. A few things, I note, we just all received the results of the appeal to the director's order, which was quite successful. And involved the berms and the weir. The question there, as Maria story pointed out, was the berms, if you're trying to repair what was once there to try and direct water through the system, you might do more harm than good at this point, because the wetlands is a living entity, and it has massively grown since the days it was started and the berms were required. So going in and ripping up plants and doing other things to get new berms in might not be, it might be quite detrimental to the operation of the wetland. Yet I would note Aqua, in their five-year plan, wants us to spend $200,000 overwork at the water land. That, like the berms and like the weir, may not in fact be necessary. That's still under review. And we have a very competent and able ally in story environmental, who are working to minimize our costs and protect our wetland. So just looking at, you know, people have asked me, what's Aqua going to cost me? Well, that could be $200,000 right there. That may or may not be necessary. Looking at costs, I think there's a lot of things that weren't mentioned in our short meeting with Aqua. Like call-out rates and amounts. Chemicals, I understand from other people in the industry that their prices have generally been about the same as Aqua's. These significant discounts might not be as great as they are, but I understand Aqua is charging current people under contract a 10% purchase fee on top of the price of the chemicals. So what they give us with one hand, they seem to take back with the other. Liability has been a big one, and I think what I've been seeing has not been full, plain and true disclosure of the real facts. I know a great deal has been made of having Aqua come in with their own employees and taking liability on their shoulders, but that is not entirely true at all. We are owners of the plant, and we are ultimately the responsible party. So that fog of liability is still very much with us. The other thing we're going to note. And okay, full plan and true disclosure, I was on a council that asked Aqua, or failed to renew Aqua's contract with us. Because having signed a contract with them, we soon found our expenses skyrocketed rather alarmingly, and we felt we could do better on our own. That's why we went with Roger LaPointe and then followed up with Victor Legault. So we have a number of years' experience operating it on our own. No incidents whatsoever that would in any way have involved any liability on anybody's part, because we had very responsible people doing their jobs very responsibly. Can we do it again? Yes, we can. I've looked, listened to David, and I'll let David expand on it, because it's his proposal or an attempt to get a proposal to us. But he has lined up people who would act as ORO. He's lined up people who would act as a compliance officer, perhaps a technician, people who would calibrate everything. In essence, a solid crew. And it can be done at a much better cost. And ultimately, we're responsible to our taxpayers about how we spend their tax dollars. And I think at this point, given that we bear some onus for failing to put out a request for proposals in the first place, we should slow down this race to approve Aqua's presentation to us. And the only thing we're losing out on is this perhaps guarantee on the price structure that they offered us. And with all due respect, if we can't ask them for another two-month extension to allow other proposals to come in, then that tells us perhaps something about a company that we're thinking of getting into bed with. And I wouldn't be happy with that kind of a thing. And to their credit, they seemed quite pleased to give us the extension to February 28th, so I see no reason why we might be, might be able to get a little bit longer time on that. And that'll be it for now. I don't see a need to rush to a decision tonight, and I would implore council not to. I think it'll just sink us financially in the not very distant future, and we will lose complete and utter control over our expenses and and where do I get these things coming on to my? Okay, I'll get it later. Anyway, okay. Short form, it's, we can't do it, guys. It will just be a disaster.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Is there any, anybody else in council who wants to speak to this? Go ahead, Angela.
I'm confused. I thought you said this was going to be on the next agenda.
We are going to be voting on it at the next general meeting, yes.
So should we not be having our discussion at the next meeting?
Committee to hold are for discussions. Go ahead, Doug. Last time.
Thank you, your worship. And you're quite right, committee the whole are the place for these discussions, and to put it off another two weeks to get to a council meeting to have another discussion, just to raise the whole process. So I think we have to be cognizant that we do want to get to a decision sometime without unnecessary delays. So I'm really just asking us to go back to square one. Put out an RFQ, rather an RFP, and, and give this whole thing a lot more thought and a lot more scrutiny before we make a final decision. Thank you.
Okay, the deadline for submission was a council decision, so it can't be changed immediately. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, so then we'll move on to Ted. Go ahead, Bill.
Well, yeah. Counselor Wilcox makes a compelling argument. My concern, as a counselor, it's my, my biggest concern is what the cost is going to be on to our taxpayers. I'm kind of sitting on the fence. We heard a lot of arguments that are closed session. But it's not like we're going to lose an ORO. I mean, they got till, we got till next year with where to sign contract with them. So I think we could take time to look at other proposals, especially, I'm not, I wasn't aware that it was another, like Northern Waterworks, never heard of it, so there are other people out there. So I think we have time to look at some, at least take a look. I just want to minimize the cost. I mean, I don't know what it's gonna, what, how this is going to play out, how much we're going to have on to the taxpayer, but I I certainly agree with Counselor Wilcox that we need to take a little bit more time and look into this. For other proposals. And again, I'm going to mention, I'm just worried about the cost. I just don't want to leave a legacy here of cost that the taxpayer has to bear. We have a lot of people who are retirees in this town, and I just don't want to impact on them.
Thank you. No one else? Go ahead, Pat.
Okay, listening to Doug. Um, yeah, let's take the time and put out an RFP and see what we, see what we get. And then we can make a better judgment till then. I think we've got the rest of this year, don't we, for our ORO contract? So, yep, I've been thinking about that a lot the last week that yeah, we were, we were very hasty. There, we may not get the right thing, but we, who knows? So let's do it. Let's do it the proper way then.
Oh, we've done it the proper way, I think. The next, there'll be a motion at the next council meeting. Go ahead, Counselor Adson.
I'd like to point out that Northern Waterworks is based out of Red Lake, and according to what I'm reading, PUC acquired them. So they're not even I think quite what we're thinking they are. I just thought I'd put a little tidbit out there.
Okay. Okay, no other comments? Okay. Can we move on to 10.2? Bylaw number 2022 dash four, to authorize the borrowing of money to meet current expenditures. This is an annual bylaw that we have to pass every year. It gives us the opportunity to borrow money if we have to go to the bank. It's basically a old Apollo's line of credit, basically. And we will have a motion coming up at the next general meeting also. Cover that. Any questions or comments on? Bylaw, no? Okay. 10.3, bylaw number 2022 dash five, to provide an interim tax levy. You want to talk to this one a little bit? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, your worship. Intern tax levy becomes due and payable in two installments every year. And this year, it's March the 31st, 2022, as well as April 29th, 2022.
Okay, and I want to note that this bylaw should be passed in one sitting, because it will affect our account receivable, I believe it is. Or, yeah, our budget process. So it'll come to our next reading, general meeting as a bylaw. Okay? No comments, no questions? 10.4. Bylaw 2022 dash six, to amend by law 2020 dash 50, users fee to add labor rate to schedule C. Again, can you read on that one?
Yes, your worship. Again, it's another, every single year, it's to any derelict property that we're able to charge back.
Any questions or comments? None? 10.5, bylaw 2022 dash seven. Be in a bylaw to amend. Sorry, yes, to amend by law 2021 dash 32, traffic and parking as per summary. Go ahead, Doug.
You're muted, Doug.
Yeah, you guys feel free to let me know about that kind of thing. Anyway, as I was saying. This bylaw will directly affect or may directly affect some of our people who live in and around that area or use that area. So for that reason, I would ask that it be read a first and a second time at our next meeting, and then finally passed at the council meeting following.
Absolutely, that was going to be the suggestion. Any bylaw that requires input from the residents or council, I believe should be done in two readings. And any else that's an annual is basically. Evan, do you want to speak to this bylaw since you spent some time working on it, or is there anything you'd like to add? Any, go ahead, Bill.
Yes. As Counselor Wilcox mentioned, that it's going to affect some of our taxpayers. Now, have these taxpayers been notified that there is this thing coming up, and do they have a chance to speak to it in, at a meeting? Will they have a chance, or will they be notified?
Dave, can you jump in on this one? I'm sure you know a little bit more about this than most people in downtown. No, the, the parking bylaw. Well, the, the problems we're having with people not remove, not moving their vehicles and so on and so forth.
Don't move, you mean?
Yeah.
There's some people that don't want to move their vehicles anymore. Pete's talked to them many times. And they just don't want any stormy, plowing. He's told a few ways, so.
Go ahead, Bill.
So, so Dave, are they just being non-compliant and being ornery about it, or or did they actually have a problem parking that they might want to talk to the, to council, you know?
Most of them have their own parking. There's only a few that don't. So if they move, they'll be plowed, then they can use a pair of raps. That's simple for them. And Pete's notified them on that part.
Evan, you've been out with Pete several times?
Um, yeah, I mean, my part of the bylaw was essentially just you know, finding, there's a lot of side streets in Cobalt, you know, that are unlabeled, which obviously can be a bit of a hazard, so we just want to make sure that, you know, everywhere is labeled with either a stop or yield, or at least something to, you know, prevent us, you know, from, from any sort of trouble, you know, if an accident were to happen at a control intersection, so that's basically what my job was.
And actually, in your package on, you have a summary of changes to the amendments, so it's all there, what we're, we're looking at doing. Yield sign, stop signs, no exit signs. It's just to give the guys a chance to do their job properly and get it all done nicely. Any other comments? Go ahead, Angela.
I'm kind of like to back up the bylaw and public works on this one. Living on and having my parking on a narrow roadway. It makes it very difficult if somebody doesn't want to move, especially when you're trying to get around a corner to get onto your street. Also, it's kind of been a bit of a nightmare in front of the Fraser Building, because there's been a few people that don't want to move their vehicle. So they're parking further and further out, and when you're going into the pharmacy or the doctor's office, it's getting very hard to get in and out, or it was. I noticed it's been cleaned up nicely now. So I fully support them and bylaw in this.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, for the record, your worship, I support the public works. I mean, I want them to make, make their job as easy as possible. The only question I had was, do they have, do some of these people have legitimate concerns that could have been brought forward? That's all.
No one else? Okay, so we will be passing that bylaw in, in two readings. So if there is any other questions from residents, feel free to bring them forward first, please. 10.6. 93 Cobalt Street, resolution to declare municipal lot surplus. You've all read, you know where the location of this lot is? Top of Cobalt Hill? Okay, go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
Does this mean you're putting it up for sale, or is it just a write-off?
No, it's, it's declared surplus, so it will be going up for sale. But that is one of the lots that I think is, is a building lot that we could possibly get a new building on if possible. Go ahead, Pat.
Is it deep enough to put a, put a house on there without having to hang the house down the hill like the former one was?
I wouldn't believe so. I'm not sure. I think it's got the site, well, the size of it is on the size of the lots on here.
It's pretty scary looking.
Hey, okay, 131.98 by 38.85 by 131, okay. I think it's, we'll have to check with our building inspector to see if it is, but yeah, I think it's adequate.
Yeah, because I know in the, in the old one, uh, the kitchen at least was hanging out over the hill and down to the garage down below it. So you know, the lot size, the lot goes all the way down the hill, and that's a, that was a three-story climb to go from the garage up to the kitchen. So, so it should, it should just be double-checked. You know, just to see.
Yep, we will do guaranteed. Okay. Any other comments on that? Questions? None? Okay, 10.7, Laird Avenue beside 34 Furlan, resolution to declare municipal lot surplus. This is a matter of lot. I think, Dave, could you speak to this one for a bit? You know a little bit about this lot?
It's a, it's an un-serviced lot, hasn't been serviced since I've been here. It's on bedrock, so right now it's been occupied by a resident for it's not much of a lot.
It has no municipal services whatsoever, so nothing can happen. And they're willing to buy it to expand their own yard. Yeah. Okay, no comments on that? Okay, 10.8, Counselor Wilcox. Revision to bylaw 2018 dash 36, procedure of bylaw to add items or business to meeting agenda.
Yes, your worship.
Yes.
Oh, goodie, I'm still alive. I think everyone on council is familiar with the reasons I put this forward. I, I read some notes from our staff, and, and they seem to think it requires a great deal of investigation before we do it. I would like to point out that I'm not trying to introduce something new here. I'm trying to revive something that as a mayor I worked with quite successfully 30 years ago. I'm not sure when or why it was dropped between then and now. But, you know, we can point to any number of items recently where things have not progressed as well as we would have liked. Whether it's getting the handrails painted, whether it was recognizing, we were contemplating even putting in an elevator in a community hall location. Pavement, grassy areas got paved over, and council, I think, was a little bit stunned and amazed and disappointed by those kinds of things. But I think if we had something like that, it provides an action list, if you would, a means of keeping track of projects that we're trying to see get going. Where they're at, why they're faltering, what can be done to speed them along. It basically just helps us get our job done, and it doesn't let things get away from us. It's a very useful revision, and I have no problem at all recommending it to council. I hope we pass this as soon as we can.
Anybody else have any? Go ahead, Pat.
Well, I had one thought on it. Yes, I would like to be kept up to date on all those things that are in progress, because some of the things, it's months since we've seen them, so it's really helpful. But I wondered, instead of being on the agenda, would they be better in the manager's report? And then update them there, and then they can be brought to the agenda as they're needed. Whichever way, but I agree, we need to be kept up to date.
Bill?
Yeah, true, you, your worship. Yeah, there's a lot of things that's, over the year, there's a lot of things that's run by us. And I totally agree with this. I think a list of action items, excuse me, would be a great thing. At least we have something to Uh, at least we have something to fall back on and not get caught like we have on some things. I agree with this.
Very good. Doug, you had your hand up?
Uh, yes, thank you. I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Doug and then Angela, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I would point out again, uh, back in my day, uh, it was a part of the agenda. Uh, in part because that, that makes it come to the council every day, every time. Managers reports, other kinds of preparation to bring things to council may or may not happen. But if it's got to be on the agenda, then it's got to be there. And. I, I, we never found a huge problem doing that. Uh, the list doesn't always change quickly. Uh, and quite often it's just a checklist of reasons why it isn't completed yet. Uh, we, we whipped through it in no time at all, but it kept it current. It kept it in everybody's mind. And I think I would definitely want to see it remain or get back into being a part of the actual agenda.
Counselor, that's it.
I agree that we, uh, we definitely need, um, this, uh, just because this isn't what we do every day. Eight hours a day. Um. So it, it's easy to lose track of things. And let's face it, we're all getting older. I don't know about anybody else, but my memory is getting a little holy. Um, so it's getting hard to remember things. That are like six months old and eight months old and some things a year old. And there's very valid reasons why things haven't progressed and I think we all recognize that. So this isn't a matter of trying to point a finger at anybody. It's just a matter of trying to keep track of stuff. So we're not. Losing sight of it. So that we're doing what we were elected to do to move the town forward in certain areas.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything to add to that? Counsel Wilcox, would you be offended if we changed that to ongoing business rather than old business? Word old is not nice to be, sorry.
We're not supposed to take these things personally, George. Um.
Or does it matter to you?
It, it, I, I, it was under old business when I was doing it. I, I like the phrase that remind that. So it categorizes where it's at. Ongoing to me means relatively current. Um, these things are not always relatively current. Uh. Case in point, our association with the University of Guelph about getting some kind of a, uh, water system for, for heating and cooling going. Um, that's certainly not current or ongoing. That's hung up to dry until the pandemic's over with, so.
Okay. Okay, very good. Uh, and okay, I want to also make a comment that the railings were not painted last summer because we had no students available whatsoever. We couldn't hire a single student, unfortunately. Go ahead.
Me? Yeah. Okay, uh, well, again, and I, I understand that completely, George, and, and it's great if we can use student labor. Uh, but we're still in the grips of a pandemic. We may or may not get students to apply again this summer. But the handrails continue to deteriorate. They, they look like. Uh, a particularly ugly comment on our town like. Again, if I were driving through town and I was thinking of relocating here and I saw the handrailings looking like that. My question would be, if they don't care about that, what else don't they care about? And I would keep driving, you know, it's. It's a really, really sad and unnecessary statement about our town and it's an easy fix. Even if we have to pay cash money.
Absolutely. I agree. Okay. Any other comments? No? Okay, uh, ten point nine then. Counsel Wilcox again, request for all budget items reviewed by council in a special meeting.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And again, in the, uh, staff notes, I, I noticed comments about, uh. We should go back to the way we did it last, uh, year because it's more manageable. And I, I'm not sure that's entirely true. I think, uh. We can do budgets by Zoom. We can do budgets. We don't have to all be in person. Uh, there, there are very easy ways to get it presented. The biggest thing is we've had problems when we did it that way. Again, we got grass paved over, uh, and nobody caught the fact that we were apparently approving a budget item for a hundred and twenty thousand bucks for an elevator that nobody wanted. Well, we wanted it, we didn't need it. Uh, the handrails, you know, that twenty-six thousand we blew on painting grass. Could have covered the cost of painting the handrails and that'd be another project done that council had already approved. So things are slipping through the cracks. And by having all of council present and as we agreed, and it was Counsel Gabani suggested, once we cut down to four counselors and. Uh, council agreed that seven mines were better than four mines. And I think when it comes to budgeting and what we want to do and where we want to move our town. I think all seven of us should be part of that decision-making process and not counting on a minority report to guide us. I think it's important.
Very good. We'll have a motion at the next general meeting pertaining to that item. Very good. Okay, any other comments on any of the items? Direction is clear for staff. Thank you, your worship. Okay, item for council renewed, or information, sorry. Ten point ten, twenty twenty-one council remuneration. Uh, resolution to disclose statement of remuneration and expenses as per ministry, municipal affairs and housing requirements. It's information basically is all it is. Are there any questions or comments on? Council remuneration? None? Okay. Ten point eleven Cobalt Historical Society letter of thanks for council for supporting Heritage Silver Trail. Comments, questions? No? Okay. Ten twelve, D S A, twenty twenty-one quarterly report Q four. Uh, we finally got ahold of our representative who sent this to us, I believe, uh, I'm not mistaken, uh. Mr. Dally, is that the, the way this happened?
Your worship, uh, it was brought to our attention that we had not yet received their quarterly, uh, fourth quarter for twenty twenty-one. Therefore, I reached out to the D S A and they informed me that it was going to a different email address, so. That has now been rectified and will be receiving. The D S A quarterly report. Moving forward. Okay, are any questions of the D S A report?
Okay, done? Okay, I have a motion here, be resolved that council accepting items as presented, a mover and a seconder. Matthew and Doug. Discussion has. All taken place. All in favor? Thank you. Other business? We have none? Close session, we have none? Business arising from the closed session, we have none? Item eleven, adjournment. Be it resolved that committee to hold meeting of council be adjourned at. Seven oh seven. A mover and a seconder, please? Doug and Pat, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.